I'd like to remind everyone to make sure you turn your cellphones off or turn them to the vibrating position, please. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on TV on Comcast Channel 99 and rebroadcast on W M G J radio this afternoon. This meeting of the guests and city now, council will now come to the chair calls on city clerk for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Williams.
Here.
Avery.
Here.
President Echols is absent today and the meeting is being chaired by our president pro tem, Councilman Johnny Cannon. Councilman Stewart.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and the meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Harris to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together to transact the business of this great city. We ask that you will be with us in all the decisions that we make and to assure that they will be made in your name. As we have come today, we ask you to continue to bless us. We continue to say thank you for all the blessing that you have bestowed upon us. Be with the leaders and guide us as we make decisions. Bless this country. Bless everyone present here in this building today. And may we continue to exhibit more love toward each other as we move forward in society. These blessings we ask in Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting had on September the 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of September the 12th, 6th through the 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the counts.
Proclamations, mayor?
Yes.
Ms. Corrine, over there. Hey, hey there, I'm sorry.
Now, we have here a really, really special person. Her birthday was September 16th, which was yesterday, 100 years old.
All right.
My wife's granddaddy lived to be 105. I hope I can get some of that longevity from her side of the family. We're as friends and relatives gathered to celebrate the 100th birthday of Ms. Corrine Adair, who was born September 16th, 1913, in Goodwater, Alabama. Ms. Corrine Adair was one of three children born to Henrietta and Judge Marbury. She is the only living sibling of her parents today. Ms. Adair was married to Mr. Anzella Adair at the age of 15 in Gaston, Alabama. They had two children, Anzella Adair Jr. and Doris McNair, of whom are deceased, and several grandchildren and great-grandchildren. That's the same Mr. Adair who used to be in education, is that right? I knew him real well when I first started coaching. Ms. Adair worked at Ideal Cleaners in Alabama City and is a member of Friendship Baptist Church on North Sixth Street. She hasn't been able to go to church but will enjoy being there again on September 15th, 2013. Ms. Adair has always loved reading. She said her favorite thing to do was go to the library. The librarians looked forward to seeing her and would always tell her of new books that were on the shelves and this would put a sparkle in her eyes and a smile on her face. And believe it or not, she still reads today. Ms. Adair has been receiving meals from Manah for a number of years. I've been told she is an absolute joy to the volunteers who deliver meals to her. Therefore, I, Sherman Gotten, mayor of the city of Gaston, by virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim September 16th as a celebration of life for Ms. Corrine Adair of Gaston, Alabama.
Oh, mate.
Thank you so much.
She can say the things she wants to say.
Ms. Adair, you know, just hearing that, and you just, thank you for being here with us. And when I heard your son's name, you know, a lot of people didn't know his name, but we knew him as Tank. Everybody knew him and everybody thought a lot of him and we certainly congratulate you on your birthday. Thank you very much.
Ms. Adair, I too want to say that I didn't know your son. He was a fine person in education and we were really good friends. And if you want to take over this council meeting, being at 100 years old, you're more than welcome to.
I know. I think you contacted me, I believe. The granddaughter contacted me and we got him in touch with the mayor. But we're always, we're always happy to celebrate any of our centennials who live in this city. And she's one of the pioneers here and her son and her family is very respected. So we really appreciate you sharing your 100th birthday with us here in the city of Gaston. So thank you again.
Unfinished business, we have none today. This is time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located 1211 Johnson Street in District 1, the state of Alabama, Geraldine Duke being the last known owners. Is anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the building department. This case involves a burned house at 1211 Johnson Street. We started our case in August of last year. There've been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve. And we're asking for a resolution today to abate the nuisance.
The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Well, not necessarily on this, but where are we in establishing the land bank or whatever we need to do? I see this as the state of Alabama again, and I think we got another one down here.
I'm with my concerns a lot about this. We were working with Etowah County to get, to try to guesstimate the number of delinquent tax parcels. That was a threshold that you have to meet to come under the auspices of the state act. It appears that that might be a possibility, so we'll be having some further discussions between the mayor's office, some of our attorneys, and Mr. Harbison, building inspector, in the near future, so hopefully.
For the general public, what we're looking at is, there's a state law that says now that we can acquire property that the state has in lieu of taxes now on their books that's not benefiting anyone. It's not benefiting the states, the cities, or the counties as far as taxes are concerned. And the cities at that time can purchase this property at a minimum amount, I think, and then the, what is it? Do anybody know, $100 or less or whatever?
I think some other people have been able to accomplish that, probably whatever the city would be able to negotiate. Or that the land bank would be able to negotiate.
But the bottom line is, we can then, in turn, either develop that property, hopefully with affordable housing on it, and/or make sure that the neighbors who adjourn that property will be able to purchase that property at a reasonable rate and, of course, get the city out of the land business and cutting grass businesses, because that's basically what we're doing now. How many we had, 600 lots or more, mayor, was it, this year?
Something like that, yeah. And if, too, that'll help us get title to the property.
Right, that's what I'm saying, get the title so we can get, yeah. But we cut over 600 lots this year. And did we ever get caught up? I know we still got a few in my district.
I don't know. Since it's been dry, we've been making progress. But I will say, since we use people from Public Works and Parks and Rec, I think I might have said this once before, the first four or five days they cut, I think they did about 300 and something lots, which some said we couldn't do that. And we're going to save over $100,000 by doing it in-house this year.
All right. Just wanted to find out where we were on that.
Any more discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The public hearing concerning nuisance on property at 111 Morningview Court in District 2 has been canceled due to an error in the title process. The case will begin again and will come before the council at a later time. Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located 823 Rosewood Lane in District 2, the state of Alabama, Amanda Vaughn Costantel and Elwin East being the last known owners. Is anyone who would like to speak in favor to this resolution?
You did say in favor.
I mean opposition, I'm sorry. Got ahead in opposition, anyone speaking opposition? Now, Mr. Harbison, go ahead, in favor, I'm sorry.
We started this case in November 2011. There've been no improvements to this property. There are no permits to improve. We're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this, a piece of property?
Yeah, this, I mean, again, this speaks to something that we've talked about and likewise piggybacks on the discussion we just had about the residential authorities and how that has to work. We have a very real opportunity here to not only gain title of these properties and get them in the, get them in the hands of folks who will actually start to pay taxes on those properties again and keep them up. This is also an opportunity for us to do better in terms of residential development and redeveloping some of these dilapidated properties and lots. We're engaging in activity that we have to as a city. When there's a nuisance, we have to begin the process of abating it. But again, we have a very real opportunity to replace some of this housing, so that's something that we'll be discussing more and more in the upcoming months and years, I think.
Okay, any further discussion? Being no further discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens against property located at 403 Elwin Avenue in District 2, the state of Alabama, Hope Stevens and Jason Dean Kitchens being the last known owners. Disagreementation has already been performed and the amount is $2,847.88. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's authorizing incentive for contributions to United Way. This authorizes the city to provide various incentives for employees to make payroll deductions for contributions to United Way. Drums will be held for selections of eligible employees to receive the incentive. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
That's some prizes we have at the city, maybe two days at the cabin at the Falls or the golf or, you know, some things like that to, they'll put all the names in the pot, everybody that does a certain amount of donation, and they'll throw out those prizes. And that's an incentive for them to do that.
I think there also was VIP tickets to Riverfest.
Yeah, there's several different things in there.
What percentage of the employees participate in this? Do you have any idea?
I don't know. We can probably find out. I think a pretty good bid, but we can find out.
Any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The next one's a resolution authorizing change order number two for bid number 3209. This is for additional patching quantities required to complete the 2012 street resurfacing project. The amount is $2,223,748.3, adjusting the final contract amount with McCartney Construction The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? That was a big figure there and I had to go over my mind twice on that one.
Thought I saw you pulling your shoes off.
There was a lot of numbers in that one. And that, you know, that's a lot of money we spend on, on streets, you know. We need to spend more, but we just don't have it right now.
Johnny, Mr. President, one of the examples of the reason that, one of the examples of the reason that this change order has surfaced is because of the fact that if you go down Miller Avenue, which we discussed last night, from the, from Spring Rock on up to the top of the hill, they have done additional work there to make sure that the resurfacing, once it's done, is sufficient and lasts longer than what we've done in the past. That's just an example of what we're talking about here. It happened down on Miller Avenue and also Robertson Avenue, and it's going to happen on several more streets in the city of Gaston, am I right, Mr. Engineer?
Yeah.
Throughout the city.
Right next door to your church.
Yes, yes.
Lister's Lane, yeah. That's another reason.
Lister's Lane?
Yeah. We're working on that one, too.
Okay, because they need that done.
I know. It's not in your district, but it's right next to your church.
We need that.
It's throughout the city. And if you, if you hear an engineer try to tell you that it's not a problem, or it's a problem that they can predict before they get into the ground, then step back and wait for the lightning bolt. Because it's not something that can be easily predicted before they start to work, so.
You know, and years ago, our base on the roads, when they first built these roads, and base is not what they used to be. We've got bigger garbage trucks, they weigh more now, and stuff like that, and big trucks. If you noticed, on all the sides of the roads that were redoing, that's where they're all broken up on the sides. And we've got three or four suggestions or things we're going to try to see if we can't save some money on that. We've tried one with some different tires on the garbage trucks, and that didn't work out, am I right, Mr. Engineer?
Blown tires.
Yeah, there was blown tires. We tried that to shift the weight and that didn't work. So we're really looking for some more suggestions on some ways to maybe save the payment. Okay, since we're finished that discussion, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, any new business today?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two items I would like to ask for unanimous consent to consider today. The first one is an ordinance amending paragraph 2, section 253, reflecting changes in the organization of the Gaston Museum of Art and the advisory board.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this ordinance clarifies the responsibilities and that are laid upon the history, the Gaston Museum of Art Foundation and the city advisory board for the Gaston Museum of Arts. There had been some difficulties, there had been some misunderstandings and some, and some crossing of responsibilities and duties, but this ordinance clearly defines the responsibilities of both of those organizations so that there's no misunderstanding of what, what organization is responsible for activities as far as the museum of art is concerned.
Any further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Do we have any more new business?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, the other resolution is a, is an authorization, authorizing an agreement between the Gaston City, Gaston State Community College for the use of the property known as Doug Parker Park.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Do we have any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this, this, this is an agreement with Gaston State Community College that the city of Gaston will pay $1 a year for 10 years for the use of Doug Parker Park over behind Gaston State Community College.
Any further discussion?
We leased that with them a few years ago and went in and remodeled all the buildings, painted, fixed the bathrooms, cleaned it up and made it really nice. We have a person from Parks and Rec Security working over there in the daytime, and then when it's locked up at night, Gaston State Security takes over. And a lot of people still don't really realize it's open, but it's a very nice park over there. Pavilion, picnic tables, pier, so you might want to check it out if you got a boat or interested in doing that.
Anyone else?
We, Robert.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any more new business?
Yeah, Mr. President, I have an item. It's a warning bid number 3245 to Rainbow Pipe and Metal Company for brick, block, and additions to the Carver, Central Carver Museum project. I'd ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion or comments on it?
Comments, this is a prime example of government working. Slow. But it works, and that's the most important thing. We did this groundbreaking some, three years ago almost, I guess, now, ain't the mayor?
That's right.
We ran into several problems, but finally, you know, people always talk about the government doesn't do this. We do, we just, we just slow, but we show. So we're getting around to that extension at the Carver Museum.
Yeah, that, there was a sinkhole, there was foundation problems, also, in addition, it's all the same project. We're putting a new air-conditioned unit and a new roof on the Carver gym and Rec's into there, it's in bad shape. Tried to combine all that at the same time and look at specs on that.
So that's, that's it.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Any further new business?
Yes, President, I have one. It's an ordinance 247. It's amending fiscal year 2013 budget to accept the BJA JAG grant for $27,705. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Yeah, I move to a bar.
Second.
Discussion? No further discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Have we left anyone out on new business? That brings us down to department reports, committee boards, et cetera. Do we have any today? We have none today. Remarks by the mayor and council. Councilman Avery, you want to go first?
I don't mind, I appreciate that. Just wanted to take this opportunity to remind everyone, we need to think about those families in Washington, that horrendous shooting we had. Those families, please remember them in your prayers. On this past weekend, we observed the 50th anniversary, the death of the four young ladies at the 16th Street Baptist Church bombing. You know, we've come a fairly good way from those 50 years ago, but we got a heck of a long way to go. And I just hope that we continue to make progress and people continue to look at other individuals as individuals and not as a group of whoever or whatever. One of these days, we're going to be in a perfect world when it comes down to that portion of our lives, that we're going to be able to judge people as individuals and not as a group or a race or sex or whatever the case may be. I hope that happens in my lifetime, and it can if we just open up our hearts, open up our minds, and be mindful of that. We want to treat people like we want to be treated. And if we can do that, then I know it can happen overnight. So hopefully, these last few weeks of celebration and reminders have softened some of us and opened some of our hearts up. And I'm just looking forward to that day that we can all live in this world, not just this country, not just this city, but in this country, but this world as one. And that will happen. Thank you.
Councilman Stewart?
I don't have anything this morning, thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of items. The Gaston Commercial Development Authority Board met this morning and we talked a little bit about some of the projects that are being considered for commercial development in the, in the city. And there's a, you know, that group does a lot of good work, and I think the fruits are obvious when you look at a number of the new retail development, commercial developments in the area. But we're still leaving some on the table, and I, you know, just kind of want to take this opportunity to let people know that that's not always, and in most cases, is not holistically a city problem or an issue where the city hasn't done something. What you have to understand is that there are two, generally, there are two things that continue to pop up as we continue to recruit for commercial development. And those, those issues are seven-day alcohol sales and, and of course, the private property owners really not being very cooperative as it relates to where they set the pricing of their, of their private property. And that makes it very difficult. There are a lot of restaurants and a lot of commercial establishments and retail establishments that are very interested in the city of Gaston. And we can no longer use the excuse that there's no commercial development happening because the reality is that those retailers are now investing again. But again, we have a very real opportunity through our public-private partnerships to continue to drive that process. So again, I want, I just want, I wanted to say that because I want people to understand a lot of times when they don't see a particular restaurant or a particular store that they're interested in, they automatically turn to the city and say, why is it that the city won't allow this restaurant or this store to come? Well, generally speaking, about 90% of the time, it's not that simple. And about 90% of the time, it reverts back to a private property owner who, who's not cooperating. Or it's a restaurant who says, you know what, we'd love to come to Gaston, but you don't have seven-day alcohol sales. So again, that's just something to consider and think through as you're, as you're pondering that whole process. I do want to take the opportunity to send my prayers out to the Wilson family in Attala. They actually lost a family member last night, someone who's very dear to, dear to me, Ms. Anna Lee Wilson. So, so again... So, so again, do want to send my prayers and thoughts out to that family. And also, I want to, on a brighter note, I do want to recognize my oldest daughter, Ariel, who here recently was nominated for Sigma Theta Pi Sorority, which is a society, a leadership society. So, you know, I, I'm a member of Phi Beta Lambda, and back then, it wasn't that big a deal to be a part of that business society. But, but as I understand it, there are some pretty real statistics associated with those members of Sigma Theta Pi because they have a, they have a, about a 92% success rate in terms of their members securing occupational opportunities after graduation. So that bodes well for me in retirement and in my golden years. So I'm, I'm excited about that for sure. So I did, did again, want to make sure I publicly acknowledged her and let her know, let her know that I really appreciate her hard work. That's it.
Mr. President, let me just add, he talked about Ms. Wilson, for some, some people who don't know Ms. Wilson, that's also Reverend Ed Jones' mother-in-law. So I know a lot of people know Reverend Jones and his establishment, his business, but that's his mother-in-law, so just wanted to.
Okay. Councilman Reed?
Yeah. Derek, I think you have every reason to be proud, I really do. And now I'm going home and look at those two of mine and see where they're going, where they are, and in my retirement. But you really do have every reason to be proud.
Thank you, David.
Seriously. I want to remind everybody about the Nakalula Knife Collector's Club Knife Show tonight, five to eight o'clock. What is it, free hot dogs, I believe, Johnny, they gonna have that, but please don't bring a gun up there. That's another big deal. Of course, I know Billy, I thought about not going, I'm kind of, but, but they just want to swap knives, have a good time, have a hot dog and enjoy themselves. And I'm going to be a part of it, so y'all come on up.
Councilman Ayers?
Thank you, Mr. President. Likewise, Derek, I, I can appreciate your, your, your thrill, you know, about your children's success. Having had three children, you know, three adult children, you know, who've gone through life and contributed to society, I understand your pride in your children, so I, I respect that tremendously. I do indeed. Last night, we had a good meeting at East Gaston Recreation Center, well-attended. And let me say first of all, and I promised Kerry Payne that I would give him accolades, he came forward, he presented a good program for what the city is doing, you know, a lot of events that are occurring during the month of October, and he's very instrumental in the answer questions, but he was, it was a very good meeting in that respect. One of the main issues that came up last night again was the nuisances that we have around our city that needs to be abated in a, in what they, what most citizens consider a more timely fashion. And we tried to, we tried to explain, you know, the process, you know, that it takes when you, whenever. And I want, I want to go back to one of the, one of the nuisances or one of the abatements that we have voted on today to, to make, to, to bring to your attention the time span it takes in some events to get those nuisances abated. The one that we had today on Rosewood Lane, according to Brian Harbison, they started this case on November 2011, and we're approaching November 2013 now, and we're just voting to abate that nuisance. That's because of the process that has to be followed before the city can go in and tear down and destroy and clean up what we consider a nuisance. So I, I, we're working on that, you know, and bear with us, whenever you have a nuisance in your area and we're working on it, you can communicate with myself or you can communicate with the building department, they'll let you know the progress of where they are as far as abating that nuisance. The other, the other issue came up about the sale of private property, or sale of land where there has been an abatement executed on the property. And, and the land bank, you know, I think Councilman Avery alluded to that earlier. City Council, I mean, City Clerk, Ivan Nelson, is working on that program, and we're getting, we're trying to get to the point of where these properties can be transferred, ownership can be transferred in a more timely manner and a less costly manner in the future. But, you know, those are, those are things that we're working on that are going to help the City of Gaston as far as tax rolls, as far as, as far as the, the community and the neighborhoods. Nobody, you know, everybody wants a dilapidated building in their neighborhood, they want it torn down as quickly as possible, but there's a process that you have to go through before you can destroy or, or, or abate that nuisance. Trust me, we're working on that. No one wants to see that done in the, in the worst than any of us sitting here, but we're working on it. Okay. Stroud Avenue, we're planning to start the Phase Two of the drainage project, which is a combined project between the city and the county on October the 14th. We will have a meeting October 1st at New Canaan at six o'clock for all residents that live in the area who are going to be affected by this project so that the construction company can give you information as far as dates and times and things that will happen that may inconvenience you while this project is underway. October 14th, we will start. October 1st, a meeting at New Canaan at six o'clock in the evening. If you're interested in what, how you may be affected, please come out to that meeting. The bridge on Springfield Avenue, the work is scheduled to start replacing that bridge on September the 23rd. And, and Mr. Engineer says about three weeks and we should be out of there with that, no more than three weeks. The October 14th date is tentative. If they finish the bridge before that, then they can move on to Stroud prior to the October 14th day. But I, I thank those of you who, who attended the meeting last night, and we will continue to have those informational gatherings monthly. Thank you.
Mayor Guyton?
Yeah, following up a little bit on what Billy said, we're also talking with Mr. Harbison in building to getting a list of all the burned houses, and I, I want to find out where they are, how long we've had them, and if it's a legal issue. A lot of times, things get into legal issues and you can't do anything to it. But, and I don't know that I can, but I want the name of the judge or the attorney, because when we got a burned house that's been there four or five years, if they got pictures, I don't understand what the problem is. So we're, we're going to go to this courthouse and talk to some judges and show them what we got, and we need to get them torn down. Another thing on the, I want to congratulate Derek and his wife on their daughter's success and how good she's done, and she's very smart, she's very pretty, and I'll say, Derek, I'm glad she looks like her mom.
Amen.
But I'm just, I'm just teasing, I could tell you what they tell me having a 13-year-old. They'll say she favors me, but then they say it looks better on her than it does me. But I know that's something to be proud of and we're glad for you.
And she took her smart after her mom too.
Yeah.
All right.
I would agree with that.
Councilman Avery?
Yeah, I have an announcement. On next Monday, we will be having a budget hearing, meeting. The budget will be scheduled for a public hearing on next Tuesday at the council meeting. But the council as a whole is asked to meet, the finance committee is actually having the budget meeting, but the council as a whole has been invited, and anybody from the public and the department heads are invited to our budget hearing on next Monday morning at eight, 8:00 a.m. here in the council chambers. It won't be upstairs, it'll be down here just in case we have a number of people who show up.
Mr. Avery, is that the time that we make the changes to the budget?
That is the time that the council will discuss changes to the budget.
It's printed in permanent ink, sorry.
Uh, Mayor, I-
Evasive ink.
I just want to say, I, I forgot to tell you, I slipped that P and N that's disappearing ink.
Yeah.
But we will be having that, that hea- hearing on next Monday morning at 8:00 a.m., so the public is invited. If the media will help us with that, it's going to be here in the council chamber at 8:00 a.m. And of course, the public hearing on the passage of the budget will be at next Tuesday's council meeting. So please, ma'am, please, sir, you've been notified.
I, I did forget one thing. Mr. Tom Sanders has a special guest here today. Tom, the Job Corps, if you'd like to introduce him.
Well, real quickly, this is Mr. Brandon Miller, the Job Corps Senator, which you know exists here in Gaston to help you get your life straight, get a career going in the right race. What, but Mr. Brandon Miller works for ABC Company, which is the admissions company that yes, it goes through strange, but that's the background checks to make sure the students that we get are the best students that we can get. So I simply wanted to put a face in, or the picture in.
Absolutely.
I wanted to put a face with a name so that local people in Gaston would know who to contact if they know a young person in our town who could be served by the Job Corps Program and your address is worth. 303 South Fifth Street, it's based at the council. The meeting's over, I just want to give you a card and just again, Mr. Brandon Miller, and thank you, Job Corps, thank you for attending.
You, you're doing a good job because you're really getting the PR out and that's a good program. Appreciate it.
Mr. President, I, I did have one other thing, and thank you, Tom, because I, I, we are proud of what the Job Corps is doing here in the City of Gaston. We're very proud of the programs that they are supporting and everything that they're doing. The kids are doing a wonderful job there. The Edgewall Youth Council Advisory, Edgewall Advisory Council will meet here in the chamber tomorrow at four o'clock. Wednesday at four o'clock, this hour, I didn't, I didn't get that clarified, but we will meet, the, the council will meet here tomorrow at four o'clock. If you're interested in doing, helping our kids, helping our youth, come on out to the
Being no further business, I ask for adjournment?
So moved.
We adjourned.
Why don't you get one of those real quick? In the car.